We're gonna pause for just a minute, we're having an IT issue with the stream.
Hey Supervisor Powers, this is Jeremy. I'm rebooting the device right now. It started, we tested it earlier, but it started with a blue screen the second time when the button was pressed on that hardware in there. It'll just be another moment.
Okay, thank you. Should we vote on that, or should we wait for them?
You have motion in a second.
Mine's working.
It's working for you?
The stream is having a problem.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Do all in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Alright, we're just gonna wait a second, then we'll start. Says tax hearings. So it's giving the word, says they have to hear.
Okay, we're live again.
No, that was what we just did.
That was what we just did.
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't need call. They're done, okay.
Supervisor Powers, we're live again.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Right on time. Hey Herman. Alright Herman, Supervisor Rocco is on the phone, so we have our three.
Okay.
If you wanna get started.
Alright.
Looks like no major changes.
So nine thousand three twenty-five, is that basically for salary increase?
Yes ma'am, what it is, I think for Ms. Ray, Mrs. Ray, it's about an eight and a half percent, I believe, forty-five hundred. And then by Assistant County Prosecutor Mr. Edwards, it's a twenty-eight hundred dollar raise. I think it's about an eight percent if I computed that correctly. And there is one additional thing, my secretary reminded me, the computer, the laptop that I have, and this was after I submitted my budget, I think it's eleven years old, it's been having some problems. I only have one laptop, so she requested the IT personnel, Mr. Webster I think it was, to do, to search for prices for the board to consider a new laptop. And it looks like, and I have copies for the board and for everybody, it looks like it's eight fifty-three eighty-six. But I think, see if the board would reconsider that. I actually had two laptops at one time, but when the hurricane hit, we had some rain leakage in my office, I guess, and it did damage to it, so that one was destroyed, it was never replaced, and that was a newer model. But what I have here, I guess I can, this is the estimate that Mr. Webster, I would have painted it like four extra copies, and then there's a copy of the roof again.
Eight fifty is not a bad price for a new computer, I'm surprised.
No, and actually he was looking, initially he thought it would all be over a thousand dollars, but he found this particular price, eight fifty-three eighty-six, so I guess that's fairly reasonable considering.
So you don't need the two, you just ask for one?
No, one should be enough. And I think this one has a larger screen.
I was gonna say, I think it's needed.
Yeah, well this has a larger screen, this, the one I have now is smaller. So as you get older, your eyes get a little harder to read.
I don't mean?
Yeah, okay, so...
Can you just order that, Pam?
He doesn't have it in his budget for this year.
Yeah, that's what-
He would require a budget amendment.
Right, that's what I, oh, I was trying to order it. At the time I filed my initial budget request, we didn't think about this, and then I forgot to submit another written request.
So can we amend it now, since we're just now hearing it?
Oh yeah, yeah, I can just add it.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so I'll go ahead and amend and add a thousand for your computer.
Okay.
Laptop, okay. Anything else?
That's pretty much it.
It's all the same to you, the raises, I'm fine with it, but I think we should probably ask the board. We talked about kinda considering all that towards the end.
I understand, okay.
I believe I got that.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you. If our library fellow is outside, would you tell him he can come in? Well, he's just upstairs.
Oh no, this is the county libraries.
Oh, the other library.
So this will be...
I can see her face.
She does say her.
Say her.
It's on page three of that spreadsheet.
When is Frank coming, near my seat? Frank Bordeaux is coming at one?
Yes.
I've got some questions ready. I do not have the attrition.
I am, I am, I'm good, I'm trying to, I got my tennis ball, I'm trying to whittle it a little. I went to the doctor yesterday, and they told me going to yoga is making it worse.
Really? I'm sorry.
So I'm like, I thought it was doing good, and they said, you're making it worse.
Yoga was making it worse?
I'm surprised.
I always thought that was... It's affecting your body.
I just, I'm gonna have to break down, I'm gonna do something, but I'm just trying not to, but you know.
I'm going, man, I'm going to beat. Virginia Beach, come go with me.
What's a Virginia Beach, brings my business?
John Webster.
Oh, you don't see John.
He's in Chicago right now, but-
He lived in Vegas.
Nope, he left, and he's working at Rivers Casino in Virginia. It's really Norfolk, Virginia. But it's close enough to Virginia Beach.
Probably close.
He's in Chicago.
I've never been, I've never been over to the Virginia, you know, the coastline in Virginia, I've never been over there.
I've been to Virginia, not on the beach side.
I assume it'd be pretty, but-
He said it was.
They say it is. Plus, as I'm saying, I see Norfolk on NCI, that's about it.
Yeah.
They say it Norfolk.
Now, we landed there one time, was she with us? He was with us, huh?
No, not me.
Rebecca was with us.
It was y'all.
In Virginia? Oh, we landed at DC.
And remember the emergency landing is in Norfolk, Virginia.
I totally forgot about that.
Did I have to switch planes or something?
No, we ended up, take a night, we just sat there a couple hours.
No, I never, I went to DC one time in law school, and that's the only time I've ever been. We went to like the Springport, it was Clarence Thomas's first day on the bench.
Wow. Oh wow.
It was then, so that was, that was pretty cool, that was probably one of the highlights of my law school.
Oh, was during law school?
It was during law school, we went.
Well, that's when you were in New York?
No, I was at O'Malley. I was at O'Malley. That's the only time I've ever been.
That's so cool.
Well, since we're on a timeout, I would like to tell y'all what we did yesterday morning.
Okay.
Because this is kinda, you're gonna love it.
Okay.
I think you are too. So we went yesterday, and we had the first meeting with the architects, and the engineer, and Jackie, and we met with the Pine Belt folks, and I think the building, about the new building. And so they're gonna go back and get the design layout, and it's gonna be cramped.
I'm sorry, you're talking about ADD?
Yes, ADD, the new building. Took 'em over to the shelter to make sure it will work, gonna do just minor, minor cosmetic things to make it so that they can transfer there during the interim, but they're thrilled. I thought Rashada Patan, I think they're gonna do a good job with the design work, they kinda, they were... I mean, once you see the folks, they went around, and once you see it, you get it.
Yeah.
You get it.
It's terrible.
Did she bring you there too? I've never been in there.
Oh lord.
Until she asked me to go.
It's bad, it's bad.
So...
He has some bad skin.
Well, that's wonderful, thank you.
Well, I, sometimes...
How long they say it would take?
Well, he said it could take up to six months on the design.
Oh gosh.
So it takes nine, it can take, what, nine to twelve months to actually build? It's gonna take about six months probably to design, show the value here.
Well, good. But they can use a children's shelter in the meantime.
Yes, we took 'em there as well to look at that.
Do we need to make a motion for that, or is that, I've done it?
I think we already did.
Is there something that it has to be a children's shelter, that's why it was dedicated to us, or given to us in the first place?
I think Tim said that the adults with disabilities, intellectual disabilities, because they all rated about a third, you know, lower, that it would qualify, right?
Yeah, right, on interim basis. I mean, the intellectual disability levels there, I don't mean to be ugly, but you know-
Childlike.
Childlike, and so it will work, we think, on interim basis.
Okay, I think they want to get all settled in, and then tell her by, oh, by the way, we forgot this.
Right, no, it's just temporary.
Was that the lady, y'all had the lady?
You're absolutely right, and we think it'll work fine for that purpose and everything.
Good morning, Sarah.
How are you?
Don't wait on me?
Nope, Connie's on speaker.
We already did, we did, we're waiting on the library.
Okay.
We're ahead of schedule.
Don't wait, no, I'm gonna go. I want a library.
You know, if the Circuit Court Administrator might be in the building, maybe you can call people and tell them to come earlier. Maybe not.
I don't have the fortune, I have to take the schedule, they're, they're, stuff, but we made it with them. Is anybody, y'all wanna come on in? Oh, there's.
Okay.
We're a little bit tired. We did, we had a tax hearing, but the tax hearing, so we didn't have to have the tax hearing.
I'm there to stare at it, but I got some eye track on my eyes every twenty minutes.
Hey Rebecca.
I'm Morgan Taylor.
Congratulations.
Thank you, good to see you.
Yeah, great.
I'm sorry I missed our reunion.
Yeah, we, we had about ninety people.
Oh gosh.
It was good.
Yeah.
Ed Price, oh, you don't, some of them you don't remember, Ed Price and some other people. They were back in the early eighties.
Yeah, heard the names, yeah.
Yeah.
It would be needed, Robert Roberts would've shown up, and that would've been neat.
We had one lady come in from Detroit, and some people came in from Texas, so, Rayanne and, and...
Jimmy.
Going to help put it on next time, and Karen.
Do y'all do it every year?
No, we do it like every three years.
Got the letter that you were re, sorry, you got the letter that you were reappointed, right?
I did, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
We put it in our minutes, and it's all, you know, set till I think next year, Ms. Cosmeyer, I think Ms. Cosmeyer's up. I have it on my calendar.
That's true.
Awesome. Good morning, Sarah.
Good morning.
Supervisor Rocco's on the phone, just so y'all know, speak loudly, please.
Okay, I'll try.
Are you used to being in libraries?
I, I'm just quiet, I'm an introverted person, I like everything to be quiet and calm, but I will, I will try to remember eighth grade cheerleading and handle that. So basically, I just wanted to come in and say, say thank you for your support, and give you a quick update, and tell you what, we've had some conversations since we sent the letter. And so we, I, I believe I mentioned in my letter, it's taken a long time, but we finally launched our Libraries Unbound mobile outreach. That was with the CARES grant, it was really wonderful, we have this fan, we have a great staff member, and so he rolls out to, his focus is low income housing, so he goes to places where people can't get to us, he goes to Emerald Primes, he goes to Gulf Mist, he goes to the Bilox EVA. He has a whole route of places all throughout the county where people have told us they can't get, and he does that service. He also goes to community events, so if there's a First Friday, if there's butterflies in the pass, and I'm by the shore, whatever those things are going on, he does that, and we certainly hope we don't have a disaster, but part of the funding was designed for rapid response, so if there was a thing where we needed to provide wifi to the public in a parking lot somewhere, we are ready to do that, and I hope we don't ever need to, but we're ready. So that has been a great addition to our services, we're, we're really seeing, feeling that benefits the public, and feel it benefits, and y'all are helping support that, and we appreciate it. That is connected to our, we had a great summer reading, that's one of our focus points, you know, every year is to have the kids, the summer slide, prevent that. So we had about a twenty percent increase in registration, so over sixteen hundred kids and teens, and we had about an eighteen percent increase in attendance, so like over, about ten thousand people came to the summer reading program, so we're glad to see that growth, and we think with having the outreach, that'll continue. We've also been trying to, to work on having more enrichment of all kinds in the community, so our staff have worked really hard to do different kinds of programs in, in all our libraries, because some of them have had a really strong bunch of programming over the years, and we're trying to add to that. That, we think that, that enhances the community to have, have activities, lifelong learning is our goal and our mission, and that's what we're trying to do. Local history is one of our most popular, I know some of y'all follow our page and like it, and so one new thing that you may or may not know about is, we have a new database, and so some of the images you see on the social media of the, you know, the historical photos, they're, they're trying to stand the mountains of things, and they're gonna be available online, so you'll be able to, if you're like, huh, I wonder, what did this look like in, you know, nineteen sixty-five, there's, there'll be some, that'll be on there hopefully, and they're working on it all the time to add to that, and we think that's a really nice amenity. And we can't tell you officially, but we got a national competitive grant for them to work on preserving history in, in threatened communities, and especially underserved communities, and so we'll, we'll announce that next week, but, but I'll give you the preview that we're excited about that, because we were, we were one of about eleven in the country, so it's a good that. So that's just a quick rundown, and if y'all have any questions about what we've been doing, I'd love to, love to hear them. In our letter, we did talk about what we would love to move towards a village-based funding, I know that that may not, may or may not be possible, but we find ourselves not keeping up with growth. I sent out, it was probably information overload, but some data on, the county has grown about fifty-six percent in revenue since two thousand and five. Our growth is under one percent, and we, we are concerned about the future as, as we go forward. Can we, how can we sustain salaries and our services? And one thing that I've gotten calls about, and the lady, last lady who called me told me she had called all of y'all, about hoopla, which is one of our really popular services. We estimate that we probably have demand that's about double what we are providing. We did a report, and I may not remember, Carrie, you're the genius on that, I think we have between two and three thousand uses of that service a month, and we bounced about two thousand-ish per month as well.
If I may, let me ask you, how, how much would you need additional funding to, to accommodate the demand for hoopla?
We, I, like I said, I believe about double, so we currently fund about forty, and we, forty thousand, y'all gave us the extra ten, and we, I looked at some what other libraries are providing. Hattiesburg spends close to ninety, Hancock spends about ninety, Madison is, they're a little bit smaller, they spend about seventy-five. Central Mississippi spends a hundred and sixty, Jackson George spends seventy on their digital.
We spent in a roughly forty thousand.
Sorry?
Forty thousand.
That's where we are, and we, we estimate that we could easily-
Double that.
We would have, we, yeah, we could double it if we had, had additional funds to provide it, because that's how many people are mounting, according to the reports.
Alright, let me ask you.
I'd like to ask a question.
Okay, sure.
I can't hear.
Go ahead.
Is Marlin going?
No, you can go ahead Connie.
Okay, I'm just a little, are we still doing displays and things on some somewhat sensitive issues that kinda makes these taken care of by their parents, or talk to about their parents, and flags and that sort of sort of thing? Are we still indulging in that, or have we tried to maybe stay out of that?
We have instituted a display policy, so anything that comes through has to be approved, and we do have a variety of constituents in the community, and a variety of families and people who use it, so I, I think we have a balanced set of displays, and we did, we didn't have any, I did not receive any complaints about anything. We tried to focus on summer reading this year, was, you know, that's our main, our main thing that we wanna, we wanna promote, and I think that's, I think that's the message I came across, is that we're, we're about, about reading, about promoting.
And I hate to ask this too, but what about Christian material, you're, you're allowing that, correct, all of it, right?
Um, we, I had a discussion with, I have asked for advice on this, because I did, it did come up with, with the staff member. What we do holiday, we do Christmas kinds of, you know, more, more, I guess more secular types of Christmas, we have Christmas trees, we have Santa, we have things like that. But there are, I, I am not qualified on the legal side, because I know there are some legal limitations, but I have asked for advice on what, where are, where can we go with that? Because I had, I had a staff member ask, can we do like a creche or a major scene? And I said, you know, I, it would go through our display process, and I, I've asked for advice, so I don't have a definitive answer, Ms. Rocco, on that.
Generally, if I may ask, Tim, Tim can-
We can have a-
You can have, you can have-
In the courthouse, we can have a-
I'm sorry, that's what you got in trouble with the phone.
But we also cannot turn anyone else down, if they wanna put a, you know, tree that, I don't know what the name of, I can't remember the name of the, the other group that came.
Like a dreidel or something like that?
Rebecca, just give me a minute.
Okay, Marlin, go ahead.
Okay, I'm, I'm through Marlin.
Okay, I'm looking into it, Ms. Rocco.
I know the phone is difficult, on the phone, but I think Tim can address, the legal part of that, is to make sure that you have, you allow any of them to, to display. You're like Christmas, you can have a major scene, you can have other, but you can't deny others. Could you address that for him, Tim, because I think she's-
That's basically what it is, of course, the county probably shouldn't be buying, if the county's paying for some type of religious thing, you're gonna get in trouble with that. The case we had dealt with the employees putting up their own major scene, and so our position was, the board's position was, that the employees have a right to express their religious beliefs, and then had the group that came and threatened to sue the county, and they said they wanna put up their own display, and they did. They were allowed to, and quite frankly, all it said was happy holidays, so it was, they were fairly nice people, I didn't agree with them, but they were fairly nice.
Well, I appreciate that, we have asked our board attorney for something to clarify as well, and, and so I can, I can let staff know that it, it could be open to all, but it would have to go through our normal process of new displays and-
Yeah, we did, just so they know how we handle it, because this is a somewhat contentious thing around the country. So we had, we had groups that were lawyers calling, saying they would represent the county for free, and any lawsuit, and then other groups that represented the other side that was threatened to sue. And the board, in its wisdom, decided that we would give them equal time, and the group, I don't mind saying this publicly, the group of lawyers that was offered to defend the county for free, said that they were gonna-
They were breaking up for some reason.
They were gonna bring a goat head into the courthouse.
Well, I speak for Jesus.
We draw the line at the goat head. They didn't bring a goat head.
I'm for him.
They had a nice little sign that said, happy holidays from the group, whatever their name was. They really were just nice people, misguided in my view, but that's, that's their right to believe that way, but we didn't have a problem. It went away fairly quickly, as you remember, after we said, sure, put your sign up, but the board did require them to submit the display, so we could see it before they put it up. And we would've not allowed something that was untasteful.
Right, yeah.
I know it tastes in the eye of the holder, but goat heads.
Goat heads.
I don't have goat heads.
You know, getting back to the hoopla thing, Marlin.
That's what, that's what I wanted to say.
We, yeah, last Sunday, I tried to get a book at five thirty in the morning, and they'd already reached a limit at five thirty on a Sunday morning, which is usually a morning when you think fewer people maybe be getting a book.
They still were getting a book.
So if you're gonna get a book on hoopla, you almost have to get it from midnight, come out five in the morning, or you just don't get it.
You don't get it. I, I, one question, and then I would have a recommendation that the board would permit. Have you looked at your overall view, expenses in your library, I'm just throwing things out, I'm not that familiar with it. For example, hoopla is books, right?
It's audio books, video, mainly audio books are the big thing right now.
I guess what I'm asking you is, do you have books on the shelf, like, by the way, to put, catching dust, they're not using them. So can, can you adjust your budgets out of normal shelf-type operations, and set some of that money to hoopla, the electronic part?
Definitely, we, we look, we have, we look at this constantly, because we do, every month we look at the statistics, and we did shift, like DVDs are still being used by a certain portion, you know, it's older folks don't like the streaming, or people who can't afford the streaming, they still like the DVDs, but we did shift some money from the DVDs to the hoopla, because we were like, okay, this is, this is going down, and one day we won't have any DVDs and all that can go. But we still, our overall book budget, our, our entire materials budget in two thousand and five was four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Our entire materials, including hoopla and books, this last year was two hundred and-
That included hoopla.
No, we didn't have hoopla in two thousand and five, so it was books and, and books on tape and all that, so, so it was two hundred and two thousand last year. So we don't have a lot of wiggle room to cut the books, because they still, you know, people, like especially kids books, you know, we have the homeschooling mamas that come in and check out fifty books at a time, and then, so we have to keep replenishing those, and then, we do go through, and we call it weeding, where we get rid of the old books, so we have to replace things, and then, of course, people want us to keep up with what's coming out, what's new, the newest nonfiction and fiction. So we, we do evaluate that, but we're not quite to the point where everybody wants the digital, so we can quit buying the hard, the hard copy books. We still need those, because we, because it's, like, to me, especially for children, you don't want everything to be digital, you want to have a picture book that they can touch, and that has, you know, that they can hold and all that, so we have to, there's not a lot to cut in that area.
I guess Sarah, to get up the comparison that you made, I don't remember which county it was, but you said they're putting in ninety thousand for hoopla. Would it be, and I would suggest to the board that we, if, if we can't do the whole thing, at least do some incremental increases for you, to us. Would help, and then maybe look at it again, try to get you up to that forty-five, I think it would require, what you said, fifty thousand.
Forty to fifty to get, at least, because like Hattiesburg is a lot smaller, and they spend around ninety. Jackson George is, they have fewer population over there, they have, they have seventy, so we're well, we're all well behind everybody.
What would you suggest, I think you would need to at least try to catch up to eliminate some of the backlog? Eighty thousand.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we doubled it.
Yes, that, that would, that would happen.
You know, most of the, I'm sorry, I'm talking.
Go ahead Connie.
It's okay. Start talking, the, I apologize. Most of the libraries are in the cities, and maybe if you get the cities to come, I mean, you know, they talk about the ambulance service and how it costs them more, but I think that, I think that Biloxi and Guppor, well, Biloxi contributes quite a bit, but we only have one library, and that's in Socia, and the rest of them are all in city limits, so possibly they would wanna add you up a little more, huh?
Yeah, it looks like they already are, have you already been, or is this just your estimated what you're asking?
That is what we're asking for, because simultaneously, while we're trying to do this, we are trying to get our folks' pay up to a reasonable amount, because-
We're gonna deal with that at the end. We're going to deal with that at the end, for all employees' equalization.
Yes, because ours are making, most, most folks are making at least 12 an hour. Ours are making 10, our base level people are making 10. So that's, we have a big ask for the cities right now, because, because they do have so much staff, especially Biloxi, because they have the four libraries. So we're hoping we'll get that, but we, we haven't, we don't know yet.
So this budget includes that?
It includes that, that bump, because, you know, we, we bumped a couple of years ago, up from eight something to 10, and now we're still behind. But, and I keep up with what the hiring rates are for the municipalities in the county.
This, of course, the budget includes the salary increases.
It increases, it does.
Includes the salary increases.
For 212, and then there are a couple of smaller ones as we go up, but, but.
And that's about, that's about what we, you know, that's what we did last year, was went up to 12 dollars. People who make it 10, 10, 50s.
I wonder why some of hers are still making 10, if we did that.
They're not on our, we're not on our.
Oh, right.
So we have to, we have to do it from what we get from the municipalities, we have to get the municipalities all on board, and sometimes that's hard. That's, that's why, one reason why we're trying to ask people for mileage, because it's, it's, it makes it built in, the ability to do that. Because, as I pointed out, our budget is, it's actually decreased in Biloxi and Gulfport since 2005. We were getting less money than we used to, which is, makes it very hard for us to, to operate.
So this 35,895 does not include the additional 40 that you need?
No, no, it doesn't. That's for, that's for operational costs, like insurance, you know, those basic, basic increases, but it doesn't include the hoopla. It includes the hoopla from, that you gave us last year.
It includes half.
I'm prepared to increase, because I think that's been a really a problem, right? The hoopla issue.
If we get hoops.
Not diminishing the salary.
The biggest complaint we've.
I would be prepared to give them some of the increase in, in what would be 30, 40, whatever y'all think.
I think the whole 40. I think we should do the 35, 895 plus the 40, because, um, like you said, I noticed board last year, or before, made a point to try to make sure that everybody makes at least 12, that our lower paid employees make at least 12 dollars, which is still, in my opinion, not real good in wage. But I think we ought to, we ought to do the same.
The 40,000 that you currently have, we only contribute 10 of that?
Well, we pulled that, that kind, that comes from across the board. I don't know, we haven't broken down by city and, so I, I think that's, I think that would be accurate currently.
Just 10, and that's how. So ours would be, so our portion, if we give the 40, then we would be giving 50 of the 85.
The what now, I'm sorry?
We, we contribute 10,000 towards the hoopla, towards that 40,000.
Yes.
So if we agreed to give them the other 40,000, then we would be giving them 50,000 total.
Yeah, which is 10 we already gave.
Yeah.
Yeah, you gave us 10 last night.
Okay. You want to have a number budget to do so?
Yeah, I'll make that.
Yeah, I think we need to include that.
Okay, so we have a motion to increase the hoopla budget to 40,000. Do we have a second?
By 40.
Second?
Yeah, if you're increasing.
By 40.
By 40.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Anyone oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
You're so welcome.
We appreciate it.
And with your vans, do y'all have Head Start Boys and Girls Club on your list as well?
I don't think we currently do, but we, we have a, if, if you know of folks that you think you can contact, contact me, and I'll put you in touch with Sean, because he's open to adding, adding things on there.
Just mention to him Head Starts and Boys and Girls, because that's where a lot of our children go to school. And then like Gulf Miss Department's on Castro.
They're for sure.
Okay, Turkey Curious.
He goes to. I think he goes to.
Okay, good.
And then he goes to a couple like Sawgrass, and there's another one in Biloxi and the VA.
And then, you know, the Section 8 office, you know where that is? Three Rivers Road, Creedsode area, they can give you a list of all some of the housing.
Got started.
Okay, perfect, yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dave.
Great to see you, Dave.
My pleasure.
Yes, sir.
And, and to my attention, I think would help Tim and Jennifer, if we looked at the salary increases now, would that help y'all?
I, I did a 5% across the board code, just to see how much that was going to be, if it was like 1.2.
5%?
Yeah.
That's total cost?
That gross salaries?
Yeah.
Yeah. But once you add the friends on top of that, it's, it's a little bit more, but. Yeah, about, well, I think it added, he did the reporting, had him.
And the reason is, all these people are coming in and asking for these increases, if we could just go ahead and do that.
Yeah, because then we can iterate, because we're going to have to go back and change it all.
You're going to have to change it all back when you.
I'll make that much.
Now, how much is the 5% going to cost us?
Me?
Well, at the time when I ran it, it said about 1, 1.2 something, about 1.3.
That includes the retirement and all the others. Okay, 1.2?
I'll make that much.
Could you back out all 5%?
That's actually nice, Jeff.
Okay. You follow what I'm saying?
I got you.
Let's wait, let's see. Depending on what, what I call a fund balance, Jennifer, you're talking roughly what?
Well, for the general fund, we're projecting to end this fiscal year with 41 million.
Yeah. I think we're good.
Yeah. So. But then for next year, we're going to be eating up some of that.
But you're right, and I will say this, we've actually.
What, what?
Budgeted that for the past couple of years, but the way things have worked out, and also with the money that we're earning in investments, we've been able to increase that cash balance.
Okay, so it's been, it's actually been increased, it increased.
It has been, and if you look at the budget actual reports that we give the board every quarter, you know, the budget is 25, 50, 75, 100% each quarter, but if you look at the overall numbers, you know, through Pam's review and, and just everything else, we've stayed under budget the past few years.
Yeah.
So that's allowed us.
We've stayed on the budget.
And we've budgeted conservatively on the revenues, so that's allowed the cash balance to.
The reason that I'm, Frank, I think, Beverly, I think you want to go.
Yes, she's made a motion, just to.
You ain't got a second yet.
No, we haven't, but we're discussing it. So do we, let's have a second, so we can discuss.
Second discussion.
The, what I'm looking at is, of course, inflation, that's not covering inflation. And if we have a, what I consider a, a good fund balance, I don't know what y'all call it, what do you call it?
It's a, it's a fund balance.
It's a fund balance, that's what the term I always use. Fund balance. I think it might be an opportunity now, maybe even, we're talking about 2.1, what'd you say?
Well, it's 1.2, but it's 1.2, but I'll go back and clarify, but that's when I.
It's going to be somewhere around that. It's going to be somewhere around that. We might, we could go 6, 7%, try to catch up with some. Try to, at least close to what inflation is.
It would probably be 2 million dollars.
You're talking about 2 million if we do that.
Yeah, the CPI increase last year was 8%.
8%?
That was last year.
So if we do 7%, it'd be 2 million?
You would be.
7% would be about 2.
Yeah, we'd have to bank check, that's what we, you know.
7%, about 2 million?
I would say 2, yeah.
I'll amend my.
I would suggest that we do. This, you know, we have an opportunity to do, considering inflation, and everybody that's coming in here talking about salary increases, that, that 7% should cover it, and any additional.
Oh, that was some of them.
More than cover it. So I, and of course, it's somewhere along the line, we gave, somebody's getting more than 7%. That we, we don't need to include 7% on top of theirs. You know what I mean?
Yeah, they'll pull up the increase in, that would be fine.
7% across the board, that's it.
So some have requested maybe a 3% or 5% in their budget. So we would just take those out.
Just take them out, that's across the board, 7%. That's what I would suggest, I think it's an opportunity to catch up with some inflation, inflationary pressures on their salaries.
Okay, so President Martin, do you want to amend your motion?
I'll amend my motion to say 7%.
Second, all right, so we have a motion, a second for 7% across the board raises for Harrison County employees. Any further discussion? What are we going to say?
He's asking, so do we need to get?
It's on, the tape is on.
Okay.
And we're, and I've been taking notes as well, too.
All right.
All right, any further discussion? I'm going to get you, Judge.
That's much better.
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. That's great.
Aye.
Motion carries, all right. Jennifer, would you do me a favor and look out there and see if somebody found Judge Dobson?
She what?
Oh, she, you just went, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Yeah, I got a text.
I'm going to call in and ask her to put it on letterhead.
What you need, I can.
That letter that Rebecca needs to sign, the solar grant, why?
Oh, Patty had it in my office.
Oh, does she?
She had two things that I needed to sign, she just took.
Okay, you just got to email it.
Okay, I'm going to do that for you then.
Yes, please.
So we don't need.
So they sent me an email address, so we just signed it, scanned it, and now I'm going to send it.
And this, they're just.
No, it's too short, I saw it, I said over there, I needed, I needed. Yeah, I got you. You're going to be the sheriff.
Are y'all done?
Check your tech, Miss, Connie.
Okay. Well, I'm going to have to do that, get back to this.
She, Rebecca ran out to sign.
Sheriff is short.
You are short.
Like a mid.
The sheriff always. Sheriff, yeah, you want pounds, change?
No, it's fine, it's fine, it's fine. It's fine, I don't need it.
Please, please, Frank.
I thought you meant lost muscle.
We're waiting on Lisa Dobson.
Hi, Mrs. Lee, how about you guys?
Lisa's best.
I helped my grass at 6:00 this morning.
You better get early.
And if not.
I was sitting on the floor over there. And the guy was telling me which way to go. My granddaughter. He knows that. You know, the judge, check the judge. Who's she? Police led it to me.
But y'all always sitting up and you're looking at.
So you're high.
Yeah.
Not high.
It seems pretty male positions. What I don't like, this is too high for me. That's just. You don't.
The worst part is that you can't hear it all. When you're out there, you can't hear. If you're not on that, if you're not on that front row, so you can watch, you know what we're saying.
You can't hear. Especially if somebody's speaking at a low voice.
She can't hear me. She can't hear me.
I can hear her, though, she's sitting in front of the clock, and I was like, what'd you say?
You gotta speak out.
I try, but, um, yeah, but you.
Y'all need me?
Well, we're waiting on her. We're waiting on Lisa.
And it's frustrating if you try and hear.
I mean, I'm still here.
We got Aunt Marlin in here. Are you coming back?
Yes.
Do you see, Judge Dobson? We could probably go ahead and just do. If she comes in, then she can come and.
Okay.
Explain it.
What's she asking for?
17.
13,000.
71. She's, she's asking for district, I mean, for, uh.
16,000, 734. However, if you look at her.
That's because of their salaries.
But if you look at her line items, it looks to be the same, actually.
No, she had a decrease in, um, for, for, which is their.
I can't hear you, Pam, I'm not talking right here.
She had a decrease in her, in the clerical support line item, and that's the only decrease.
So 550, 537 now, as opposed to 553.
Right, because the AOC, you know, we get those figures from them, so that's what they, that's their state.
So we're good.
So we're good.
Okay, can we just move on? Any other questions on serving court? Maybe Rebecca from VHS and Frank, we could get sooner.
Yeah, we could probably get Frank, let's see if we get Frank, because she got a copy of VHS, she's going to keep doing a lot of the damage.
Yeah.
See, she included her. Being pre-stated.
Hello?
Hello, we're here.
Okay, it's kind of going in and out, but I, I hear most of it, so I was good.
They're trying to make everybody out.
Going on silent.
They're trying to make everybody out. Now, J D, wait on J D.
I can give you a text, Chuck Loftus, if that's okay with y'all.
Madam President, this is not what we're looking for.
Oh, well, that's what.
This is a solar power grant that we're asking for, right? I'm sorry, yeah, that's. The board approved you applying for.
The solar grant?
Yeah, solar grant, so we're trying to get it on the board letterhead. So this is all tax increment financing and other things, which she brought me.
Well, who's supposed to, I mean.
I don't know, with Tim and.
I can send it to body, and she can print real quick.
Oh, okay.
I thought we, we approved the grant that Robert Weigle and.
Yes, we're trying to get the paperwork.
I thought we only approved an intent letter. Oh, I thought you said something about applying for the grant.
Yeah, just the intent letter.
I need some.
No, I did say that. Because there's language in order about $100 million for solar power, is that correct?
Yeah, that had 25% match for the administrative habit.
I would simply say this, I cautioned the board in one condition, before we get anything, get into all this stuff, that we're not committing to one pin.
We weren't, there were, we already voted to go ahead and give the intent letter, and there was no match.
Now, they're asking us to kind of head up that Harrison County would be a lead, uh.
In, I mean.
Deal with other groups, and I'm not sure I'd want even getting, you know. I think what he's going to do, he's, he, I think he's on the agenda.
Monday, for Monday.
Robert Weigle is on the agenda, and what, he's coming to propose. I can't even remember the guy's name, but they, they, they're getting a $50,000 grant. And with that $50,000 grant, I think there's a proposal to hire a contractor of, or someone that, or some group that's familiar with this type of stuff, to, to start the process. And I, that would include getting all the various entities, as I understand it, that's going to be, it's, it's, it requires a group thing, it's not just Harrison County. And I, I think that's what he's going to propose at the next board meeting. Getting that grant, not, not the solar grant, but another grant from the community, I can't remember what.
About which?
No, this guy, and I apologize, I can't.
The foundation, the community foundation?
It could be, who, who?
Because he mentioned that.
Who is, uh, who?
This is, um, Weigle, was it?
Oh, yeah, Roger, Roger Weigle. That's who I was trying to think of. Right, I think they're working to get that 50,000 of grant. And from that 50,000 grant, then use that money to go look for a contractor to, or, or group that would be able to.
Specialize.
Specializes in that, and they're going to organize all the groups. Specializes in that, and they're gonna organize all the groups.
He did insinuate that part in the presentation, but you're right, that he, he did say that the county would be out no money, right, you know, in there, so far.
I wouldn't even talk to, i- if the county is involved financially.
The admin would come out of the grant, out of the county.
Well...
Because like Connie just said, twenty-five percent of a million is a ton of money.
For admin.
That's, that's what I'm saying, we make no commitments to that.
No, it's just...
You know, that's, that's strange, that's, you know, this money is under the, uh, uh, Inflation Reduction Act. So to reduce inflation, they're gonna spend twenty-five billion dollars. You know, you got to be, listen, it doesn't take a j- you got to be an idiot to think that you're gonna... You spend more money to reduce inflation. The reason we got inflation is too much money.
You understand how many supporters they have financially that are in this business?
Yeah.
For their campaigns.
Yeah.
I just thought solar farms require large, you know, they have to be, it has to be really, really big.
You put on rooftops, and I've been asked, they have, they have zero power, they need cell power, but not...
Uh, uh, the green, uh, stuff. That's what that is. Call it what it is, but don't fool me with a inflation, Inflation Reduction Act.
Did you go in solar farm that was interested in property development?
Federal government, and I'm here.
You had to help me.
And they got, they still have...
Yeah, Frank just said yes.
The option.
He's close.
There's three hundred acres out at the... It's three hundred acres under option, but they never did answer that.
I was just, I wouldn't, I, I'm not even sure that...
You're good, because I didn't hear him insinuate that.
Insinuate what?
That there's gonna be a fee before.
Wait, wait, no, wait, here's what's coming. They said, "This is kinda like the coalition, and we're not getting paid," and then they're gonna all get everybody up, and then it, it's...
This is all, this, don't, don't think that these guys are gonna...
They're not doing anything. You, you, this ain't your first government.
No, it's my first one. I know Goodwill was, you know, this is not altruistic necessarily, I don't wanna be real...
Partial.
If this is not, uh, uh, altruistic thing, we just want to, you know, there's, there's, there's a good bit of money involved in this, and there's gonna be some people making some money off it.
And then the solar company may come in, so...
But they, what I don't, fine, you know, if they can arrange it, make the money, fine, don't make it off Harrison County, though. Not a pin.
Can we get a rebate?
Harrison County is committed to save the town, and I'm willing to do that.
Yeah. Thank you, Judy, appreciate that. Oh, Frank, you are super fast.
You must be.
Thank you, I love your jacket. All right, Ms. Judy, let's go.
Okay. Let's go.
Yes, and Supra's right, goes on the phone, Judy.
Okay.
Just speak loudly, please.
Okay, um, I've submitted the budget, there are increases on a couple of line items. Uh, the one is on the salaries. I've requested me an increase for the fact I stepped up, uh, when I stepped into that position.
Well, I think we need to, I think we need to just make, uh, we just agreed to cross the board salary increases for all employees at seven percent.
Okay.
So that's gonna take all this salary request off the table.
So congratulations, we're the first to know.
That's more than I requested, so I'm good.
Yeah.
You'll take that.
I'll take that. Um, the other thing that I did have on here, um, on line item six oh two, I've ran a report, and it looks like we're using more paper we've gone over the last month, I mean, the last year. We're, we're budgeted five hundred, and we're right at eight hundred already, so I wanted to see, make sure I got that up instead of six hundred, to get it up to like a thousand.
Yeah, you would think that, um, with all the scanning that we do.
Yeah.
To reduce, we'd have a reduction in pay.
I know. And I, I look back at past years, and it, it just seem like, you know, this year we just increased for some reason.
Okay, so you wanna amend that from six hundred for paper to one thousand?
Right.
Anybody have opposition to that?
Wants to get it down.
Yes, ma'am. Well, we, we print all the purchase orders, we had to print three copies of everything. We sent, made copies of invoices when the vendors send them to us, so we print those out.
It's awesome, the bid, the bids.
Yes, the bid.
Copies for all the committees, vendors, and all that, too.
And all the bid information.
I don't have a problem with it if you need it.
Okay.
But our main request...
The main request.
You got the vehicle?
Is the vehicle.
What do you need a vehicle for?
Well, I've tried to start going out to all the departments, and I'm meeting with the, sometimes the department heads and the requisitioners to go over the process, to make sure they're doing everything the way they're, they should. They are then, there are saving questions for me, we're going over the process of everything. At times, it, it may be new people.
How, how often?
I'm go, I've tried to go, I went to each department, um, I've tried to go twice a year just to stay on top of it.
Let me make a suggestion. I don't, you talking about the department heads?
Or just you?
I'm nobody talking to the department head.
To the, yes.
Do we have any department heads that do not have a vehicle?
Do we have some? Yeah, we have some.
That don't have a vehicle?
They use the, either they get the pool.
They either have the access to the pool or they don't. Why wouldn't they come to her instead of buying a car for her to go to them?
I could. Do they come to you? You just go to them?
I just go to them.
They can come, I mean, if they have automobile, carpet head could come here.
We do have, she's been using the carpool.
Right.
You do have access to the carpool.
I didn't have access.
You've been using the carpool, well, she got...
Yeah.
I mean, and I had mentioned to her when we talked about, it's not gonna necessarily be for her to say, it would still be a pool, but it would be assigned, but other people can still use it if you had an extra, you know, just assign.
What, what department here does not have a vehicle, or need a vehicle?
Or need one?
Or, or, I, it's, I'm just saying, it's what...
Julie, well, Julie doesn't have one, Julie ain't glad, but she just comes back and forth to places. They, they all have them available too, I think, you know, they just don't have it actually assigned.
I just think, Judy, that it would be easier for them to come here than you to have an automobile to run to all the department heads.
Well, I was also thinking...
That's my thinking.
I was also thinking, because I'm considered essential, should there be a hurricane or something, I have a way back and forth, which Pam...
We'll get, we'll get a car then, or if it comes necessary.
Right, and that's what Pam and I had kinda discussed.
Okay.
So, that's pretty much it, on top of that, and the extra items for that.
So you wanna amend your budget, take that vehicle line off?
Yes, ma'am.
Add your six hundred for paper to one thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
And then congratulations on your seven percent raise.
Thank you.
Y'all deserve, thank you.
All right, any further questions?
Thank you, y'all have a good one.
You too. Hey, Frank, thank you so much. Glad to come.
Well... There's a lot of, um... This market... This is just information of where the market is, and, um, why the market is, why, where it is. And everybody... So, we know the January one insurance, uh, reinsurance treaties, we obviously were able to place coverage prior to that. We saw a pretty significant increase, uh, this past year, prior to January one reinsurance treaties. January one reinsurance treaties were absolute disaster. July one, we actually started seeing capacity come back into the market globally. And so, from January to July, everybody's reading newspapers of Louisiana, Florida, uh, you know, really shrinking capacity, couldn't get insurance. Mississippi didn't get hit as hard, but we did get hit very hard on rate increases. Now that we're starting to see capacity come back into the marketplace, um, globally, you're starting to see more carriers interested in actually writing cap coverage. They're li, they're holding their line on their premium increases, but getting capacity is not gonna be an issue. I do believe with a lot of public and private entities, not just in Mississippi, but along the entire Gulf South, um, all the way up to New York, quite frankly, have lessened their loss limit. In our case, we have over thirty carriers that participated on the loss program last year, and dropping some of the coverage, our loss limit, we fired several of those carriers. Well, those, those carriers are going to want to get back on business, and they're not just getting fired off Harrison County, they're getting fired off of Gulfport, Biloxi, Fort Myers, on and on and on. And so, I do believe there's gonna be a competitive nature to the market if we don't have a cadment in the continental U.S. Having any idea what the percentage increase is gonna be is a crapshoot right now. I mean, we're seeing everywhere from forty percent to three hundred percent, uh, rate increases. Y'all got hit very hard last year, y'all got hit hard the year before, I do believe you're gonna get hit hard, hard again. One thing that I am doing, um, is I have taken every public entity that I write on the coast, and I've packaged those together, I've taken those to London, and we're looking at forming our own coastal cat pool.
Yeah.
Fund. It's legal to do, we're gonna have to form an association, we're kinda working on that right now.
Basically, more cheap, more, uh, cheaper, is that what you're saying?
Well, I think what we do, every public entity is, is with the same carrier, the same group of carriers, the same panel that we're dealing with, whether it's domestic or London. And so, we've been hit on the Mississippi coast with not just rate increases, but we've been hit really hard on exclusionary language that really excludes a lot of stuff that would normally be covered. I believe if we package this all together, then it gives a lot more, we create the manuscript form, we ask them to subscribe to our manuscript form, and basically, if you wanna be part of it, be part of it, if not, then you're losing it. If I could get the capacity, uh, you know, six months ago, this would've been a possible endeavor, and it may not make sense. It, but we are, we've got it all packaged, we've got it all modeled, we've scrubbed every SOB, uh, and we're in the first stages of talking domestic, and then I'm going over to London in September to meet with them. And so, my hope would be to be able to roll that out at Form One, um, and then pick up entities as they come up to come into the pool. Uh, the first year's gonna be very difficult, and my ultimate goal would be to, you know, as we build surplus, it's, it's more than likely gonna make sense in a hard market that we're in now. Once we get in a soft market, you're better off buying on your own, but this doesn't work if we're in and out, and in and out. So there's gonna have to be some sort of long-term commitment, but as we go through, if we don't have claims, the idea is to build a reserve fund, and over the course of the next ten, twenty years, the, the association takes on more of the risk, and we purchase less reinsurance. Basically, we're gonna be going to the reinsurance market with the rest of the marketplace, where right now, you're not big enough to do that.
In this co-op situation, I'll call it, let's say Diamond Head doesn't, isn't with kids, will you also allow other companies?
Yeah.
Okay, just making sure, it wasn't just y'all alone, that it would be anyone.
We're gonna, we're going to do this for the three coastal counties, possibly the six coastal counties, I don't know that it's gonna work, but I am looking at some of the folks in the six, in the upper three, to see how that models. And like, y'all are going to benefit cer- certain entities, uh, based on your spread of risk.
Yeah.
Uh, but other entities are gonna benefit y'all because they're, they built hardened structures, you know, they, they had a complete loss in Katrina, and what they came back with was complete. So this may be exercise of utilities, but we are working multiple different angles, y'all haven't, you know, we're out to market with y'all's account alone, and we're also out to market with everything collectively, to see what will work.
Do you feel like we're gonna pay, pay more again?
Yes, I don't, you know, last year, it was double the premium, double the deductible, and half the coverage, it's not gonna be that bad. I, I can, it's not double, double, half, it's, it's gonna be bad, but it's not gonna be that bad. I mean, that's just the reality.
Is this similar to like the coastal American group that formed?
No, this will be more similar to the wind pool.
So, okay.
But just a, it's gonna be, uh, just for coastal entities.
So you don't think it's better to, um, get other counties in it?
It'd be huge, but it wouldn't behoove them. And quite frankly, and if you look at, if you look at the past three years, and you compare our loss ratio to other counties north of us, they've been hit by tornadoes, they've been hit, you know, we had...
That's true.
Several events north of us, but our loss ratio is way more, way better than a lot of folks north of us, you know, so...
That's what I was thinking, that we could, they could...
There's a reason why the Supervise Association doesn't want our property.
Yeah.
And so, so since they don't want ours, we create our own and do our own dealing.
What they want is in that workers' comp pool. As it does, so, I'm just thinking outside the box, maybe eventually you could include that.
So workers' comp, we can't individually self-insure, and that's been always the issue, and if you can get a carrier to do a large deductible program, um, then it would be, we could legally do that. Uh, the only way we could do a work comp pool is to create our, uh, uh, our own association, have multiple, uh, but we've been there in the past, uh, prior to any of us in the room, and it didn't work out well for Harrison County.
Did not?
There's a very large assessment. Unless everybody buys into the same control, the, you know, controls in place, that really doesn't work very well. The, um, other, we are doing, um, just for y'all's, uh, y'all know, we are doing a cyber liability course in October, that's gonna include, um, we, we have folks from the FBI, carriers, and then IT folks that are gonna come in, it's gonna be a very good seminar, uh, for, hopefully y'all staff can join us on that, and then we are going to do, um...
Can you send something?
Yes, we'll be sending safety dates out to, to everybody, and then we also are doing, um, Smith Systems driver training, and y'all have a spot for y'all's folks, basically, is, uh, we'll have six spots, it gives y'all the ability to send somebody that can train your folks in Smith Systems driver training, it's been several years since we've done that. And then we are also looking at purchasing a Skids car.
I did send that information out to the safety officers and county patrol.
We're only allowed one spot.
And the only one, the only one that responded, that's, well, that said they wanted to go is, is Tom Clifford, but he's part-time, I guess it doesn't matter. Carolyn already is, Carolyn already is one, we already have.
And we can record it, because I'd like to give it to my seniors, the senior centers for the cybersecurity.
Cybersecurity?
Isn't that what you said, the first part was?
Yes, we could definitely do that. This is gonna be more geared towards public entities, just because y'all are such a big target.
I got you, I'm sorry.
Uh, but it also...
We gave IT, uh, probably extra people, two extra people in order to teach our seniors all that, but I don't know if they got behind or what happened, but they haven't, they're, they're not doing that yet, they were trying to teach them how to kill the computer, and they just, we don't wanna know that. We wanna know how to use it.
But could we not send, could we not send the department?
Yeah, but I know they're busy, whatever.
I don't care how short you got your technology.
Maybe they could work with price on that.
That's why I...
Yeah, we're gonna send, we'll get you...
Well, that, that FBI has a complete division now, that, all they do is educate, and they're in every, all fifty states, and that's who's gonna be working with us.
Okay.
But, and so, that, that y'all can get her information, and she could probably come to the senior centers as well.
I think, I take the bottom line here, Frank, like, old boy told me one time, it's gonna be bad, I'm just here to keep it from being bad.
That's right.
Right?
That's one hundred percent. But, and we've gone through your SOBs, and I know that, you know, Harrison County's in a very unique position where y'all can, you know, financially can assume more risk, and so, we're gonna look at every deductible option there is, if y'all chose to assume more risk, uh, in this market, and, you know, we did that after Katrina, and, uh, as the market softened, y'all were able to buy, you know, more coverage for, uh, you know, this is gonna correct itself, and we're midway through it, I believe, so... So there's more reinsurance today than there was six months ago by a long shot.
Okay.
And before you go, if I may, and I know I'm beating a dead horse, but I've just got to, I would like to make a motion to rescind the letter that the President Powers wrote to the bond companies about Kent Jones, I just felt like it was not accurate. And I want you to be here when I'm making that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Oppose.
No.
Connie, you on there?
Oh, sorry, Connie.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, yes. I mean, what did y'all, I'm sorry.
We're voting to rescind, the motion was to rescind the letter that was sent to the bond.
Yeah, and right, yeah, so we can get it corrected.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 And Connie, you're aye?
I'm aye.
Yeah, Connie, yes?
Yes, aye.
Okay, motion carries. Anything else?
Not everything.
All right, thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Just keep us posted on that. Hello, Ms. Rebecca.
Hi.
Come join us. DHS.
She is on. How are you doing today?
You want to answer the question that was asked and have it answered by Pam, which seemed to be why everybody was so confused? I'm just asking.
No, that wasn't a motion, really.
I guess she's asking who's going to write the correction, or who, or?
County administrator, right?
County administrator, I'm, I'll make that part of my motion.
She won that, I mean, that's fine. She should be one of them.
Okay.
Not forward.
Right, but with help with the attorney's authority.
Which, yeah.
That's my suggestion. And now we have DHS.
All right, hello. And you probably haven't heard, but we just approved, because everyone's asking for different raises, so we just approved a seven percent across-the-board raise for all county employees. Just wanted to let you know that.
That's fantastic.
The tribe of board.
They call county employees.
Yes, they, some of them are.
Some are, some are CPS.
This budget does cover county staff, but they work under their direction.
But she's asking for less, we'll probably need to adjust that.
According to this, it's almost fifty percent less.
She's only at a hundred and sixty dollars. It was a hundred and sixty dollars less.
So it's a hundred and eighty-six dollars less, but that's before the seven percent.
Right.
Yeah.
So just need to figure that in.
Yeah, we'll go back and correct it and add it back.
Okay, got you. Does everything else look okay, though?
You wanted to address?
Yeah, I just will, yeah, that's a, I know it's not a good time, but I feel like I owe it to the board to tell you officially that CPS and DHS officially separated on July the first.
Speak a little louder, if you don't mind, CPS and DHS officially separated on July first.
So that being the case, we have some issues that we're trying to work out and everything as far as having adequate space for the DHS employees that need to be there, and also for CPS employees that need to be there also. Right now.
Are there more?
Yeah, but y'all separated, so why are they still there?
This was above my pay grade and my authority, so what I did, I contacted State Office, and that's why I have Mr. Wayne Carpenter with me today.
He's above my pay grade, too.
Well, he's with our, he's the director of our finance in DHS. And so I brought him so that he could answer any questions and kind of tell you what our game plan is and all of that.
Okay.
I do have one question. So the building you're in.
Yes.
Is owned by the county, Pam, is that correct?
Yes.
Is it leased to DHS or CPS?
No, we have an agreement with DHS, and they have paid them back over a fifty-year period.
So it appears that CPS needs to find a new home.
Well, that's kind of what Wayne wants to talk to you about, is to kind of.
Well, I'm just cutting to the chase, I'm sorry.
I understand, and it is convoluted and all that, and I do apologize, but I'm glad that you've seen a few minutes early.
I would assume at some point, either whoever they separating, at some point, one of them, CPS, somebody's going to have to find a place, it's not, they're going to have to come to us and find a place.
Or they can pay rent, they can have a lease agreement.
If you don't mind, I've been talking over to Wayne, maybe he can clarify some things for you.
Good morning.
Good morning, thanks for coming.
I have a handout that I'd like to give to everyone. Basically, we recently attended the Mississippi Association of Supervisors Conference. I didn't have the opportunity to meet with any of y'all. I didn't note that on my list where I had bumped into anybody from Harrison County. But we shared this joint letter between CPS and MDHS. It kind of explains the situation that we're in as it relates to the recent split. I'm going to leave a copy here for Ms. Rocco.
I'm on the phone, I'm here listening to you.
Yes, ma'am, I know you are, and I left you a copy of this letter that I'm handing out. I'm sorry I didn't send it sooner, so you might have it in your meeting notes. But basically, what that letter is saying is that in July, on July the first, the Department of Human Services and the Department of Child Protection Services have officially split it. They are their own separate agency. Now, as you know, in the statute, the county is responsible for providing the Department of Human Services with facilities to operate out of. The recent tech bill that the Child Protection Services went under has that same language.
I'm sorry, who's responsible for providing?
County.
The county, sir.
But it does say we may enter into a lease with each county, but it is the board's requirements.
That's right, and that's new language. That's one of the things that, why I wanted to meet with the supervisors or talk with them at the supervisor conference. So that's new language. It does allow us to enter into a lease with you. We want to take advantage of that opportunity, because what it's going to mean is, quite frankly, I don't have all of the data necessary to give a very accurate estimate. But I will assure you that it will be no less than what you're receiving now, and I think it will probably double if I had to make an estimate.
But you're saying we as DHS?
No, I'm saying that CPS and the Department of Human Services.
But we already have a lease with DHS, is that correct?
You have a use agreement, yes, ma'am, similar to a lease.
For them to use the bill that they're currently in. But we do not have one with CPS.
No, we do not have anything.
Because they were part of DHS.
At the time, they were, yes, sir. And I would like to make a formal request at this time to get permission from the Board of Supervisors in accordance with the use agreement to allow CPS to remain on the premises in the current space that they're occupying until we.
But they don't have enough space, isn't that right?
They don't, and at some point, we're going to have, we're going to have to talk through trying to locate some more space.
Well, Ben's talking about that for over a year. We had the same conversation last year, same conversation.
Does the county have any vacant county properties or anything?
We did, but not big enough.
I mean, we brought up, we brought up S and PDD before.
Yeah, but the election commission decided they won't.
She did say, she did go, like, hell, they only have how many employees? And they're only there three times a year.
But they store all of their.
Oh, they store.
No, they go every day.
They go every day.
But not all of them.
How about the skate park, y'all? They can't use all of that skate park, I wouldn't think, in.
Well, the school wants to sell it.
They have somebody looking at it this week, I think.
The schools are going to sell it.
Really? Oh, I hope they sell it and turn it into something really special.
But to go back, I feel like.
They have a piece of property on Fifty-three, we can build some.
How many CPS workers are there, are we talking about?
We currently on my side, I'm Assistant Deputy Commissioner for Well-Being, my name's Casey Williams.
Hello, Casey.
From my side, we currently have sixty, and, but we will need to hire, with the numbers today, we will need to hire to seventy-five, hopefully by the end of September. And then Wendell, my counterpart, has a similar team.
Right, so I'm Assistant Deputy Commissioner for Safety, and so my side will need thirty-five total. We currently have twenty that's there, and we'll reach thirty-five to supply what the staff that we need.
So a hundred people.
Do some math. How many total people?
One ten.
One ten.
And I might, I'm pulling from way back.
Okay.
Didn't y'all move out into another building from a building that you were renting from John Freyard on this industrial seaway? Was that y'all, or was that a different person, different room?
They're saying no.
I think they were looking at it at one time, but I don't know.
Call Bill Labor, tell him you need a piece of property.
They might have to rent one from Johnny, if he's got any available, or anybody else out there on the industrial seaway.
But don't we have property out there? Tim just brought up a good point, you could build something.
I was joking, but that's.
Yeah, that's a million dollars.
I know, but they're going to pay rent.
They pay it back over a long period of time, many years.
Have y'all been looking at any places?
No, sir, we know that there is a, the old Progressive building that's on that same street, it is vacant, or there's a good bit of space in that building vacant, but we have not.
Please let me introduce Ms. Melissa Wade, she is from the Child Protection Services Agency, the newly created agency. She's the Administrative Services Director for them, and we've been working together all around the state trying to work through this new separation and the joint spaces that we share all over, so.
Nice to meet you, Melissa.
Nice to meet you all.
So you, do you share like copiers and conference rooms and that sort of thing?
Typically, no, and some of the smaller locations, we do, you know, we have common space, bathrooms, conference rooms, you know, those waiting rooms, those kinds of things, typically for copier.
But you're saying the arrangements you have now before the divorce, the arrangements you have, was it suitable?
It is suitable, except for the fact that we are growing so rapidly, and numbers for children in this county are growing rapidly. We are now in several locations in our building, three people in an office.
I think we're.
We're running out, we are out of space.
I think we're.
So it's not suitable anymore?
It is not suitable for us, no, sir.
It works.
Y'all wanted it done.
Yes.
Yeah, one at a time for Connie, y'all, sorry.
Yes, ma'am, it was, it was good until now.
Because I went out there a few years ago, y'all were busted up the scene, didn't you?
Yes, and it's even more, and we do share one conference room, I think.
Big old conference room, nice one, yeah.
But we do share that, and there is a lot of common space. Our file room's on their side of the building, it's.
It's still a whole other issue that we have to come to a common agreement on.
The school board's about to have a building available after Community Road.
The school board, who did you say?
Yeah, the school board owns sixteen section land, and we're getting ready to move into a beautiful new center that we're building for all our services to be streamlined in one place on Seaway Road and Gulfport. So Community Road would be available to y'all, but it would need renovations.
How big is that?
Right across from the old Garden Park, I would say, maybe eight thousand square feet, but it's got a ton of parking.
Eight thousand?
About eight to ten thousand square feet, I would assume.
So the problem we run into, it requires between two hundred and fifty and three hundred square foot per person, that's kind of the rule of thumb that we use. But that's when you take into account bathrooms and waiting areas, and, you know, the common spaces, break room, and that kind of stuff.
I'm confused. Y'all have a hundred and ten, and y'all are DHS?
No.
That's what we're saying.
How many, how many?
That's why I was asking.
Our numbers, we picked yesterday, it was about eighty-five.
DHS is eighty-five, y'all are in the building next to the jail.
Yes.
South of the jail.
But that building is.
Y'all are, that's why I was just confused.
Yeah, but they're growing, and see that building, and y'all are growing too, so.
So they need a separate building.
Yeah, the current building's like forty-five thousand square feet, but it has a lot of pointe and over in the hallways.
Geez, but it would make more sense to keep the smaller company, DHS, there, and move to larger company.
Yes, and that would be a conversation that we would love to sit and have with you separately on kind of what we need as far as common spaces, visitation rooms. We would need multiple of those based on the level of clients that we see. There's an additional need that we don't currently have in the space that we're in.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
Yes.
Eighteen, seven, with a hundred and ten people, a new building, if they're going to pay rent, probably.
That's, because it's essential upon pay rent.
The rent that we would pay would be the federal share. So if the fair market bargain, I'm just throwing a number out there, was ten dollars a foot, for example, we would pay five dollars a foot.
But what if your landlord wants you to pay more? Just asking.
The county has.
I mean, as an answer.
We're kind of falling back on the statutory obligation of the county to provide the space. And we're certainly.
The difference is, we obligated to do that. I'm sitting here, if that's what the law says, that's what it says.
That's right.
But I think, I think what you're going, what you're kind of moving for, Tim, is due to the fact that they need some larger of a space, we'd deal the building, bond the building out, but they, we're not sure that, based on the statute, that they would pay the bond off.
That's true, I don't know.
If what they could pay, pay the bond off, I'd do it.
Where you going to find a building that houses a hundred and ten people?
What they got, like?
Something in the industrial seaway.
I mean, the building that you're talking about crossing Garden Park is not going to house a hundred and ten people. That's small.
But could you, do y'all have to be in one location since, because we have two agencies?
No, we do not have to be in one. Matter of fact, we would prefer not to be now that the agency says so.
No, I saw the CPS.
I meant CPS.
You know.
We would prefer to be under one roof, because with the, with the new addition of our safety unit, so they're going to do the front-end investigative part of any call or claim that we have that comes into the agency, and then it will roll over to our Well-Being and Permanency Team. So being under one roof does help. Now, if you wanted to build a property for us, could we split in the interim? Yes, to be able to house our staff. We could keep one section of our staff in one building, and we could separate and put safety in another building until something came available for us to be together.
But may I make a couple of other suggestions?
Sure.
There's the old Garden Park, across from the hospital. I think they may have some, I know we're trying to use some of it for mental health, and that may not work together, I don't know. And then over there by, over there off of C.T. Switzer Drive, the old hospital there, it's a big old place, it's got a lot of, and I don't know that all that's occupied, that's a lot of property. We had a hospital, and it was the old Gulf Coast Hospital.
Gulf Coast, mainly, but the county doesn't know.
I know, but we may, they may have to find something, and us, I don't know, I don't know if we can deal something, but we may have to find something and pay their rent, is what I'm hearing. Is that right?
We got a furniture somewhere.
Yeah. All right, well, we'll have to work on that, obviously.
I don't know, y'all do well.
Okay, we can do that. We'll take a look at the one that's.
No, I'm finding mandate, I'm finding mandate.
Is that Progressive building?
Yes, we'll take a look at that, and we'll nose around and see if we can find anything else. And is there a point of contact? Should I communicate with who, if there were to be some county property? Okay, all right, I'll reach out to you, and then we can, we can chit chat and see what we can find.
Do you have a card?
I do.
I'd love that, yeah.
On behalf of the Department of Human Services, Mr. Bob Anderson, I do want, thank y'all so much for the support that y'all do provide to us. I had the opportunity to spend half a day in the facility yesterday. It's a well-maintained facility, there's no facility in the state of Mississippi that's better than that one to include the state headquarters.
Good to hear.
So y'all are doing a fine job, and we are appreciative for all the juniors.
Well, y'all are the heroes, you have the toughest and most important job, so I admire all of you.
Thank you.
That's unbelievable.
So it is necessary.
And on one hand, it's increasing, but on the other hand, at least awareness is increasing, so you're getting more pace workers, and you know, it's gone from seventy-five to about twelve that y'all manage, and hopefully that's going to stay the standard, you know.
And in Harrison, we have the second highest ever chartering custody state.
Yes, you do, second to Rankin. All right, thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Rebecca, anything else?
I just wanted to thank y'all for indulging me with having these guests and everything.
Of course.
I figured they could answer more questions than I could.
Yes, sounds great.
I just work here.
I need to do it right now.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. It's Judy.
Is it okay?
Hey, Chuck. Yeah, let's let Chuck go there since you drove here. Ms. Webster wants to come back? Hey, Chuck.
Hi, uh, Judy says she just needs to say a few things.
Okay, if you're on my way then.
No, I'm on my way.
Thank you. Get Miss Judy. I said anything else. Webster, that's the purchasing order.
Judy Williams.
Williams.
Webster was the next.
She wants to come back?
Oh, well, Williams.
She wants to come back. She said she had a couple of things.
Sorry about that. That's okay. Y'all got me distracted.
Judy, did you, did you, the seven percent raise three?
Um, there, there's two things. One, our part-time person just got an increase. So will hers be increased on top of that?
No, we're gonna equalize and figure out.
Okay, so that will kind of be balanced. And as far as Shay, I would like to see if y'all would reconsider her getting a little more and the reason she'll be changing titles. She has really stepped up since we, she's come on full time.
Let me clarify what I think Judy's asking. When she, you say she just got an increase, she met the year.
The before.
The part-time person.
The po.
Had met the, yeah, the part-time person had met the year, so she got the five percent.
Right.
All right, well, then she should get the seven percent increase.
Yeah, if we're doing everybody, if we're doing part-time.
But what she's asking is does that include the one she just got?
Sure.
No, it doesn't.
It, it goes into effect the twentieth of August.
Well, this one.
Well, this one going till October.
Okay, so, but she'll get that.
Can I answer your question? She's, that's her salary now.
Yeah, okay.
What you just, that raise she just got is basically her salary now. She will get the seven percent increase.
Gotcha, okay.
With that.
Anybody, anybody coming from work.
I think what y'all told her was no, it didn't.
Yeah, I was wrong. I thought we said we're gonna equalize, but she was already established at that.
Right.
That, she's been working a year, so.
And only the seven percent, they have to be employed before October one.
Right, so she's, she'll be.
She was.
Okay, um, and like I said, as far as Shay, I would like to see, I would like to change her title to Claims Examiner too, because she has really stepped up, gone above and beyond, making sure orders are processed.
Is that not something you could do on your own?
No, she's, she.
Do you have in your budget currently?
Well, she's asking to change her title and justify a raise. She can't, she can't on her own give her a raise.
Not unless she had.
I don't have, I don't have it in the budget.
Unless that's in her budget, she doesn't have that.
Right, so that I would really like to.
What is Lasagna's title?
Lasagna is three.
She's a three, okay, so she's going from a one to, you're asking from a one to a two.
Yes, ma'am. And I would like to raise her. I'm in fa, I'm in favor of that. To where she's making more balance out for what she does. Cause she's really helped out a lot. So I would like to up and that can include the seven percent to where she's making seventeen dollars an hour. I feel like that's a good amount and that, so the difference would be the increase, but the seven percent is all.
You're creating another position at a salary plus the, the seven percent.
So you're, you don't have a one, basically, you don't have a one.
Right.
She's going away with a one and can give it to a two.
Yes.
She won't need a position. It's just, you're just going away with one position and naming it a two.
Right.
An increase. How much does she make right now?
Right now, she makes fourteen seventy-six an hour.
Then you were trying, you were gonna bring her to seventeen.
Seventeen.
And then the seven percent.
Two dollars and twenty-four cents an hour.
So like, seven percent set her bumper up two dollars.
Two dollars and twenty-four cents.
Right.
Let's be sixteen something. Should be.
It'd be right at seventeen.
That's what, that's not bringing her, that's what she would get no matter what.
Let's take that.
Yeah, so you're just asking for a title to change.
Title change and increase in her pay is seventeen an hour.
And then the seven percent.
Or the seven percent, that can be.
That'll make it. That'll make her up there.
Yeah, then that'll make, up to seventeen.
Right.
Two seventy, that'll make it.
I'm not the best math person. Two twenty-four.
It's a rare, right, two seventeen.
Fourteen seventy-six at seven percent.
Well, I'm gonna bring her to fifteen seventy-five.
Fourteen seventy-six times. I'm terrible with fractions and math.
Jennifer, she's good.
She made her pay salary thirty-five, thirty-six.
At seventeen.
Seven.
Ten.
So it needs to be two dollars and three. That's what I would do.
So that, she's right.
Right.
It's a dollar three.
A dollar three when baby's seven percent.
It'd be a dollar three, but she needs to double up to that.
Two dollars and twenty-four cents.
Right. Even seventeen.
Seven percent increase to solve all the costs.
I got it.
Yeah.
So she'd still need another couple.
She's not, yeah, she's gonna get the, it's about a sixteen percent increase.
How much?
Sixteen percent. I think, yeah, we, we did the seven percent to keep all these constant discussions from happening, to be honest. We just got a five percent raise again.
Unless there's a true, excuse me.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead. Unless there's actually a creation of additional job responsibilities, just, you know, seven percent should be seven percent.
But she already put in your help raise.
And I don't mean this to be critical. Judy's absolutely doing what probably I would do. But all these department heads are coming in here and they want certain people to get pay raises. You know, they got, they're asking you to give them pay raises either through some manipulation with a, a, a job description or something of that way, or even taking on additional responsibilities. The whole point that I made the recommendation, let's give some folk, let's do across-the-board seven percent, that's it. And when they come in here, they, they want you to give this one a raise and that's, that's why I said, seven percent, that's it. Not what they want, increase it and then an additional seven percent.
Yeah.
And justify, so actually this person would receive what? You said sixteen percent?
Sixteen percent.
That's huge.
That's what I hear.
Slackers are gonna make the same as the ones who work there behind the office, the sad part.
Can you, if, if you can just find out who the slackers are, we need to deal with.
Exactly.
But you try to find out who the slackers are.
Okay, so we're staying at seven percent. Okay, all right, thank y'all. Glad you let back in.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good one, too.
Well, we just did calculations. It's two hundred and ten people. He said two hundred square feet. That's a little more than.
Yeah.
That's twenty-two thousand square feet.
I mean, where can you find a building?
I have no idea.
The slackers.
We're in the action.
Sure, let's, hey, Chuck. No, we're not done. You can stay in, it's a public meeting. All right, Mr. McAdams? Oh, you wanna do it after?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, Chuck.
Hey, Dan.
The beach looks really nice, buddy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
You gotta be impressed.
And before you ask for any raises, we want you to know we just did an across-the-board seven percent raise for all county employees.
Okay, great, fantastic.
All right, Chuck?
Except us, we don't get it. Except us now, we don't get it.
You're not an employee.
Y'all get a two thousand.
No, we don't.
We're not employees.
Just the employees.
So Chuck, your ask is.
Statutory.
Equipment.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, CTA went down from last year, the amount that there was, it was sixty-eight-five, now it's fifty-nine-five. CTA went down. I'm asking for a little bit more funds in repair and replacement parts because things is, keeps going up and about the same amount that we did last year on equipment. So it's about the same thing. Other than that, everything stays the same.
You only about, Chuck, but.
Sixty, almost sixty-five.
Fifty, additional fifty.
I'm losing y'all.
About sixty-five.
About sixty thousand, yes, sir. About sixty thousand more.
And that covers your.
Cards and, and a little bit more on the equipment.
And one vehicle.
And one vehicle, yes, ma'am.
How were you able to go down on transportation?
I don't know, that's CTA.
That's the CTA.
That's what CTA did.
Gotcha. Okay, that's good.
Can I bring up one matter?
Sure.
They covered the boardwalkway next to the Long Beach Harbor.
Down there, yes, sir.
Covered it with the, with the, uh, flow-through stuff.
Flow-through decking, yes.
Which is a lot better than where you would think.
Sure.
But, but now you've got open, we had a lawsuit, they fell into one, so we won the lawsuit. I still don't understand how you fell in it, but he was drinking, so that probably explains it. But we did have a lawsuit. The Supreme Court was, was very, that one had railings on it. Product that were put up at that time and they were all over that and we had put railings up. And, but if we're gonna cover one, you're opening yourself up when you covered that one, but you left the other ones open so somebody can fall in it. Now, the way we argued before the Supreme Court is that had a, a big, you know, birthday parties with young kids. As I recall, the fencing was put up not to keep people falling in it, but to keep kids from getting in it because it was deep there and they couldn't get out. Now, at the end, it was not covered because it was shallow and you couldn't get out. So we're worried about somebody getting in it and not, you know, get out of it. And so, but when you start covering one of them, you create an issue of why all of them aren't covered.
But not all of them are exactly the same. Not all are created equal.
Would a fence, uh, satisfy resident in covering it?
You know, we put a signage. The signage helps because.
This is what I'm getting, Chuck. One of the reasons that we have it difficult, you need to access that.
We need to access that and to keep it cleaned out.
Why couldn't you put up a removable fence? Well, not when I.
They'll move it and get it.
Well, what I'm saying is you can put up a fence along there and if you have it, but the machine could simply pick that up and move it out of your way when you have to go in there and maintain it. And then you can put it back.
We do it daily.
Good solve, right?
Oh, you're doing it daily?
Yeah, we have to dig those out daily.
Oh, I didn't realize you were doing it daily though. That's a little different situation.
Right, they're like that.
We have to do it daily because it's southeast, southwest winds, keep that sand pushing up.
Pushing it right up.
So if we don't dig them out, then we'll have.
Gotcha, I didn't realize it was daily.
Yes, sir, and something.
I think it's an obvious hazard that we don't have to warn against if you can't see the thing. Because I've been, I went out there at night for that lawsuit to look at it. You have to be stupid, excuse me, to not see it and I, and I think the guy was drunk, but could never prove that, but he would know he was drinking.
But we did that with a Tylenol spray. That was Tylenol money that we did that one in Long Beach, in Rover Bear Creek.
Yeah.
It only covered part of it.
We covered the, you know, the northern part of it.
Which is the deeper end of it.
Correct, it's how the southern edge we didn't do.
You did.
We did from the bridge, the walkover bridge north.
That's right.
We've got additional signage. I just brought it up because that one's gonna be covered and if somebody falls in it, unfortunately, the truth of the matter is, that's the only one we know of in seventy years plus, so.
But you couldn't have any, any, even partial raise area.
Not on that southern end because we have to, we have to maintain it so much.
That one you have to dig. We talked about it.
Yes, sir.
I was just bringing it up because I don't know if there's any plans to cover any of the others.
If we gave you something expensive, whether. Yeah, it's pretty expensive.
Anyway, I just want to bring the board's attention. I don't think it's something you need to cover if anybody falls in it.
But we still have a couple more projects that I wanted to give y'all some, uh, heads up on. We have that, y'all knew about it last year, the one from DEQ that we're, uh, finishing up some boardwalk sections from Roden, uh, from Rodenberg Avenue back to Debees Road. So we have continuous boardwalk from the Small Craft Harbor and Gulfport all the way to the Comfort Station at Rodenberg. We have an engineering firm. We still doing some stuff that DEQ wants us to do on some regulations before we can go out for bid on that project.
You don't need any Tylenol.
No.
I'm sorry, you said Rodenberg to what?
From the Small Craft Harbor and Gulfport all the way to Rodenberg Avenue. That'll be continuous. There's some sections in Biloxi that were missing, so they're gonna fill those in. And then we got a, I think it's gonna be on the agenda for this coming Monday, a Go Mesa Grant. We asked for two-point-one million and they allotted one-point-six for, to remove some of the outfall pipes and put a square culvert, makes the water flow a lot better in between Teagarden and Cowan Road and right there by Felix's. So there was for three. I'm not sure if we can do three with the one-point-six. We might only be able to do two. But I'm still waiting on Russell to get back with me on that, on the Go Mesa. Other than that, everything else is the same.
I'm sorry, how much for the new vehicles?
Uh, I think it was forty-five.
One vehicle and then he had.
What's that, what's that?
If we could do an automobile management program like the sheriff's.
No, that's.
For the whole county, it seems like it would make more sense because we never, there's no real continuity to all the vehicles in the county. And we know when, like this one's got to go next time, this one's gonna go next time, you know? We, we, I've been asking for that for some time, but does anyone else think that might be a relatively good idea so that we don't have all this expensive vehicles all at one time, not knowing who's gonna make what?
Probably, probably.
We need to hopefully management department.
I think it's on the, I think they might have one with the GPSes. I'm not sure.
They do. It does on the GPS. It keeps up with all dangers and repair and maintenance and all that.
She could look on the GPS and say, man, we've had, you know, we had to change oil on this thing. We need a new one.
Yeah, I'm asking for a new in loader, uh, two four-wheel-drive tractors. What that's gonna do? Right now, it takes us two weeks to do a full pass on the beach from Henderson Point to Biloxi. With these two new tractors and the two new beach cleaners that I got this year, we'll be able to do everything in one week's time. Because we'll have two crews. We'll have one on the west, one on the east, and they'll go to where they meet in the middle. So we'll be able to clean the whole beach in one week's time.
And it says a stand-on blower. Is that like a?
To do parking lots and parking beds, yeah. It's a little blower that you stand and then the one four-wheel-drive crew cab pickup truck.
We had all, buy everything at one time, we could maybe make, save a lot of money.
I think that's him, Doc.
And, and we, we maintained, we cut the.
We're five tractors and some go to the road park and some go to the park, some go to the, I don't know. I'm retiring. What do I know?
Where's the mute?
What? Just kidding.
I'm retiring. Okay, you should talk.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Y'all wanna take lunch? Yes, let's take lunch.
Margaret, we're gonna break for lunch.
I'm nuts. She said I'm right, yeah.
I, I need to, I'm here, but you've not been seeing me very well.
Okay, um, Chuck, there's something about our, last year, didn't you ask for larger equipment last year?
Uh, last year.
It was a different piece.
Different piece of equipment because, I mean, we have a lot of in loaders and they, they age. We try to, we try to turn over about every five to six years. try to, we try to turn over about every five to six years.
Okay, y'all, I'm gonna hang up, and I hope I get y'all back.
She needs to hang on this.
Oh, hang on, one more thing. Thank you, Chuck.
Thank y'all.
Madam President?
Yes.
I was talking to Tim. Clear if the board did a while ago, dealing with the position of the Board of Supervisors, with the bond letter.
Okay.
Okay? When you did that, that was the authority of the board for the first time. Now you're rescinding that letter, am I correct? And you directed Pam to rewrite a letter.
Correct.
Okay, so that doesn't make sense.
Rescind, S E N D.
Huh?
Rescind, S E N D.
No, I think you meant rescind.
You don't rescind a letter or an email, you have to redo another one and say, this is now the position of the board. I just told that, Tim. That we, know what I'm saying?
You're thinking of rescind, and I meant rescind, but that's okay. That's fine.
Well, rescind is your minutes. All right, am I correct?
I'm not sure what, you talking about the letter?
Yeah.
I don't know, I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
You know what I'm saying, as a board physician now, there wasn't, that was the biggest argument. There wasn't a board position in the beginning. You cleared that up when they voted on it. Now the board has a position, and the board is gonna rescind, rescind their position and rewrite, and rewrite the language. Am I correct?
My interpretation of what was said is there will be a letter would be written saying that letter is withdrawn or rescinded.
And then have Pam answer the question.
Letter would be rescinded.
It shouldn't be Pam, that's an insult to the President.
One question they ask is how are you gonna keep this from happening again?
Correct.
Correct.
Now, that's what we wanna know.
It was originally sent to Pam, so my motion was, I thought was clear to let Pam answer it.
That's an insult to the President.
That way the board, and they can write in the book, the board has no opinion on this right now. I mean, anything but, you think?
Okay, whatever.
I mean, I...
You're trying to clear it up.
I appreciate that, John, but I really do not get insulted. I really, I really don't.
Okay.
We, but we did make a motion, and we, that was...
That was the position?
That was the position of the board, and now y'all majority wanna change the position. And I am very eager to see what the answer will be. So what will the county do to put into effect to keep fraudulent money being spent from happening again? That's, I, I look forward to that.
Madam President, I disagree, because you're the President of this board, you should be writing the letter for the board.
Marlin, and nobody wants to be, nobody on the board, John, they said that nobody, they don't want the board to, to be involved, so they want Pam to answer that question.
You're already involved now.
Yeah, we became involved, unfortunately.
So my point is...
No, our attorney answered for us, we were inserted, so, but go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm not trying to start an argument, I just think you ought to clear up what you've done.
Well, I'll make the motion to make it clear then, okay? I would like to rescind the letter to the bond that was sent by President Powers and rescind another one by Pam Olrich, with Tim Holloman's help, to answer the question that was asked. That's pretty clear.
Okay.
I don't think that's...
To the best of her knowledge, I don't think...
That's not what the board just did, they're rescinding.
I will not, I vote against, if I'm...
Hey, Connie, you can't hear us, we're speaking.
We're speaking about the board.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Pam, I will not concede or allow anybody to write a letter for the board. We need to look at it and approve it.
That wasn't done the first time. That's why I add that to the...
Well, we voted on it, y'all weren't here.
What, what, what the position, what the motion that I made, whether it was done or not, the motion that I made at the meeting was simply to say, the board's posi, we, the board took no position, period, in reference to the, the bond issue with Ken. That was what my motion stated. The board, in effect, took no position.
And that was great, but that's not what the letter said.
Yeah, you can read...
The letter that I saw...
I agree with you on that.
The line I added was directly from the state auditor. I'm sorry, I used the word fraudulent, that is what the auditor put in writing, and I am sorry if that hurt you personally. But you just, you just made a motion.
And it's pretty clear.
Well, it was written by the auditor, but...
That was written by the auditor. And it also never said that the purchase law...
My motion was simply to inform, a letter went to them, and it appeared that the letter, based on the fact that Tim signed the letter, it was the position of the board. And my position was to simply inform them that we did not have a position, we were...
Well, we changed, ma'am.
We had no position on that.
I'm trying to say...
All right, everybody, please, one at a time. One at a time, Tim, you have the floor.
Writing another letter is not gonna make a...
Exactly.
Big difference where we are at this point, I don't think it's gonna change the bond of the board.
Exactly.
But you need to be prepared in the minutes.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
That's fine.
Jones, if the letter be rescinded, and maybe that's all the board ought to say, is that the board has not taken a position that that letter is rescinded. I don't, I don't know how you say that, I don't really wanna draft it.
No, please don't.
Just to get a clarification, just out of academic discussion, if we may, what can this board say that, what can you say that you can guarantee anybody that nothing will happen again?
You can't...
You cannot do that.
Long and short of the law, is the email, is the email said...
This is not my original thought.
I'm sorry, I thought it was gonna be easy, but...
Just let me say this. When we, in January, we all gonna stand up again and we're gonna take an oath to abide by the laws of the United, the Constitution of the United States and the State of Mississippi. If you don't abide, if you don't abide by that oath, you can't guarantee nothing. That's, you know, that's why we take an oath. How can I guarantee anybody in this county will not do anything?
I was not present when that motion was made, so I want to make a motion to rescind that. Number one, because I feel like that it had some inaccuracies in it, that's just my opinion. And number two, I just feel like because y'all did that when we were gone, that we need to rescind it. And if you don't wanna answer the question, that's fine, because there's really not an answer.
As long as, you wanna go, somebody...
Let him finish.
The board is gonna put itself in a position, I'm afraid, that what's gonna happen is, these bonding companies are gonna get fed up with all of this, and nobody's gonna get a bond come January 3rd. And it's gonna be, and everybody's gonna have to fall back on putting up a personal property bond, and it's gonna be a mess. I, I don't think, with all due respect, and I've gone on the record that you disagreed with the letter, which I think is the important thing from Ken. And, and I just don't, I think we're making a bigger mess out of a mess. And I'm deeply upset that I even have been drawn into the mess. My brain, you, you look at things in hindsight, I thought I was doing what I was supposed to be doing, but regardless of that, you know, it's personally difficult. I don't think we're gonna, and I don't wanna draft, especially, I don't think it'll last for this to draft another one. But I, I think we're just, with all due respect, we're gonna make things worse, not better for Ken and everybody. And so it's not a letter, not gonna be helpful, it's not gonna change your mind, and gone on record, disagreeing with it. I don't think that the laws that are already in place are there to take care of what was there, they just aren't followed as closely, well, I only wanna say that. Because that, that remains to be determined. We don't know that, because that's for the auditors and Ken's lawyers to work out and on this board. If that finding becomes something that is a problem, then the board might be able to address it, but really it's just a matter of following. And I said this the other day, and I say it again, there have been other instances where we have caught issues with not following the purchase law, and corrected them when we discovered. And, and y'all are aware of those. And so, all you can do is when you find a chink in the armor, is try to fix it, and that's what you do. So this was, so it's a very difficult...
The only thing, the only thing that concerns me is that, in one of the sentences, it indicated that we had done fraudulent purchases, purchase, oh, geez, I can't even talk, purchase order. And I don't think we did. I think that part of, of the situation is why we are such a, like Marlin said, you know, we, we can't do, we can't promise that that will never happen again, because we're not, we're not micromanaging every single thing.
Explain to her.
It's impossible, it would be impossible to do.
You can, you can have a legal process, a legal purchase law.
Sorry, Marlin, let her finish. Keep, keep talking, Connie.
I don't want, I don't want the bonding company that's there to think that we were, that our purchasing orders were incorrect, because I think they were right. And I, there's, there was another sentence in there that made us assume that he was using that for his living, and we don't know that for positive. And he, you know, now, if he'd have taken all that stuff, Ken taking all that stuff and put it in his new house, that's been a whole different ballgame, you know? We could, that would be different, but he did.
Okay, Marlin had to say something. Let's not make it worse, I'm Mr. Jones, let's go ahead.
I think Tim is absolutely right, we, it's just, it's not gonna help anything. But just to answer the question about legal purchase, nobody questions whether the purchase artist, the process in itself was illegal.
That it did.
But, but when you...
That it did.
When you do purchase orders, you can't, you can't do a legal purchase order for an illegal activity.
Correct.
And if the purchase order illegal, the purchase order's law was following, that's the difference.
But you can't, you can't...
You're rescinding that, though, Ma'am.
We're rescinding it, okay.
You're rescinding it, it's...
That's all fine.
It's going in the record.
On the record, that is rescinding.
If you won't rescind it, it's basically the board's...
I'm gonna get, uh, clotting in here, you want it on the minutes?
It's being recorded, we're, we're still live.
Okay, you wanna get her in, you're gonna vote on this motion?
We didn't do it a while ago.
I think they already voted. I mean, we already took a vote.
Now it's different, though, the language is different.
Okay.
Because you're not directing Pam to write a letter.
Oh, that is correct. Okay, we'll wait for...
You can make a motion, Beverly, to amend your motion, easier to say it and done. My bond is about to be canceled.
I want, I want, my feeling is to notify that bond company, and it may not do any good with all this.
That letter she sent was the reason why that bonding company has rejected mine.
That's what I think. So the least I feel like we can do is at least let them know that...
Because my...
You know, just simply say that.
Yes.
I, I don't know how to phrase it otherwise.
Simply say what, sorry?
Just, something said the board desires to withdraw the letter.
But notify them of that action.
That the board would, uh, desires to have a term...
And I'm not...
Withdraw the letter.
Withdraw.
Yeah, please don't, it's better for you not to.
No, you're the one who's, who's putting all the...
No, I'm looking out for you, like...
You're not looking out for me?
Connie, it's better for her not to say those things right now, for you.
You have to say them, it's on record.
We made a vote, I wrote the letter, I took the wording from the state auditor. Marlin is correct.
We made another vote to rescind the letter.
Right, there you go.
And it passed, so...
There you go. Believe it or not.
We probably need to make another motion, so we get clear what we're doing.
Okay.
Motion to withdraw, to send the letter to the bonding company.
Motion to...
Jury of the board who voted to withdraw that letter.
Okay.
There you go.
So moved.
Okay, and it would be the, the President.
Second.
No.
If, who wants to...
What's no?
The board has to do another county motion.
She just made a motion, supervisor Rocco seconded it. Any further discussion? Do you wanna make the wording?